... his 13th order. Ms. Vok, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Winger?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mrs. Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Fletcher?
Here. Would you rise to the pledge allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public comment section. If anybody in the public would like to speak to the council, please come forward. Tony? And your name and address for the record, or email address, either one.
Sure. Anthony W. Young, 2204 Vero Beach Avenue, Vero Beach, Florida. Good morning to y'all. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to talk. Many of you know me. I'm a member of the Indian River Genealogical Society Board and the first vice president for the Veterans Council, the chair of the Veterans Advisory Committee from Memorial Island, and lay leader at the St. Helens Catholic Church. I went to St. Helens Elementary School and then Vero Beach High School. Our family has been part of Indian River County and Vero Beach from the beginning. And I have been a public servant for the nation as a soldier for 30 years plus. Your decisions today are important. The budget drives the priorities for Vero Beach. In June, I tried to convey how important Crestlawn Cemetery is to our residents. Last month, as part of the budget review, you decided to continue development of an RFP, Request for Proposal. My understanding is that it will be reviewed in September. We are here today to stress again that for many of Vero Beach, this remains a priority. Crestlawn Cemetery is hallowed ground. It is part of our heritage, just like Pocahontas Park, or Homestead Beach, or the Florida Theater. Since the last budget meeting, a website has been created. It is keepcreslon.com. If you've not seen it, I'd recommend you look at it. It has a background for this dialogue, photos, and a link to the interactive map that the city provides for the cemetery. A poll was created by Mark Schuman, and the last time I checked with it, it indicated by about 85% that the respondents want to keep the cemetery as a part of the city. I've spoken to most of the city council, as well as to Jim O'Connor, Monty Falls, and Cynthia Lawson. Thank you for being so supportive of me. I appreciate it. And in speaking with the staff and examining the data, it is clear the decision is not driven by a financial necessity. The cemetery is now in the black. The investments into new irrigation, landscaping, improved roads, and a new columbarium are paying off. Selling it is simply a philosophical argument. It is a matter of values. Your FY 2013-2014 budget for Crestlawn Cemetery looks sound. The objective to take advantage of undeveloped northwest, of the undeveloped northwest portion and examine marketing for the columbarium is smart. The staff is at an absolute minimum. Revenue is expected to increase, and no capital improvements are budgeted. I urge you to maintain the trust placed in you to provide for the perpetual care of our deceased loved ones. It's a civic duty. Selling the cemetery as a disposable asset is derelict. Next month, the decision to stand and preserve this special part of Vero Beach for future generations remains. It is a matter of priority. Thank you for your time and your dedication to our town. God bless you and Vero Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Tony, can I ask you one question, or just a question?
Sure.
Would you tell us a little bit about what your greatest fears would be to the cemetery if it was divested?
The clearest concern that I have is a trust that probably the citizens of our community has placed in you, the elected leaders, the representatives for us. And that is that you will take care of our loved ones. And that care that you provide cannot be replicated by a business that is driven by economic profits and margins. Because just like in '93 and '94, when it came to the city, it was decided it was more than dollars and cents. It was a responsibility, just like soldiering was for me, that I had a commitment to uphold the Constitution, you have a commitment to the welfare of the citizens of Vero Beach. If I turn to a private business, their decision is exclusive of all the intangibles that we place in that cemetery. And those intangibles are very meaningful to the citizens. And if I go to a corporation that's based out of Pennsylvania, and they have multiple cemeteries, the time spent allocated to Vero Beach is negligible. In addition, our ability to have recourse if there's something wrong is then pushed off to Orlando, where that board representative is basically our conduit to anything wrong. As opposed to now, if I go into the cemetery and I find a headstone with a base that's wrong, or gone away, I can pick up the phone and say, hey, this is a matter of concern. How do we best approach it? It's responsiveness, it's a concern for everybody that has come before us, and it's an investment to my granddaughter. So 20 years from now, when she goes back to Crestlawn and she says Anthony W. Young, it's not going to be in a state of disrepair, because I think that any one of you would never in your wildest dream allow that to happen. So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Anyone else would like to speak to the council?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Alma Lee Loy, resident of the city of Vero Beach for a long time. I think I came to the wrong meeting. But since I got up early, I would like to just make a couple of comments, because I am here. I'm here in support of what Mr. Young had to say to you. I'm also here because I'd like to point out that Crestlawn Cemetery is one of the entities in the city of Vero Beach that makes the city different, different from many other cities. And that was one of the desires of the early settlers of this community. They wanted to help build a community that was different from Fort Pierce, different from Melbourne, different from others, in order that people would enjoy living in this community and contributing to it. About three weeks ago, I heard some tapes that were made back in 1964. And I'm hoping that we're going to eventually have those tapes available to civic organizations. But in those tapes, those leaders back then, without exception, all pointed out how important it was to the development of this city, that we be different from a lot of others. And I feel that our cemetery represents one of those. And I can only encourage you, and I will be back to encourage you, that you, I think the word is delete, any consideration of putting that cemetery out for bids. You have the authority to do that. You are the trusted representatives of the people in this community. And I really believe that the majority of citizens would wish you to do that. They have certainly indicated to some of us who are interested, and I know they have to you all. So with those few remarks, let me wish you well for the rest of the day, and assure you that I will continue to talk to you, but I hope you will give it serious consideration. The cemetery is something that needs to be maintained, needs to be under the advisement of the city council, who are the elected representatives of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alma Lee. Anyone else would like to speak to the council?
Thank you for the opportunity to appear. My name is Dan Stumpf, 615 Camelia Lane. I have a question concerning the memorandum done by the city manager on the second page, under the area Staffing and Salaries. It's pretty clear, it begins on the first sentence, that there's been a decrease of 30 positions citywide. And of that figure of 30, 19 eliminations are from the city's general fund, okay? Then in the next paragraph, as I counted up, I think there are 13 positions that have been restored. So I just, I'm trying to get to the bottom line. Is it a total of 43 that have been eliminated with a net 30? Or is it a total of 30 with, would be a net of, what, 17?
There is a total of 30, and I believe the backup material shows where those came from. For example, and this, I would be on the backup Attachment B. And Attachment B shows the staff cuts at October the 1st, 2013, where they would come from.
Okay, I have that. I may not have read it close enough.
And just for clarification, the original version of this budget that council saw during July 8th through the 12th actually had a reduction of 31 positions in the general fund and 43 overall. So I think our, what we're trying to clarify in this memo is now that number stands at 30, after the direction that council gave us to put back those 13 positions after those July 8th through the 12th workshops. So the current cut stands at 30, down from 43 where it was July 8th through the 12th.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dan.
So that leaves us, excuse me, so that leaves us the total of 421?
It leaves us with a total of 400. Again, if you'd refer to Attachment B, which should be right there. This is the last year's budget, the cuts, and the remaining staffing.
I guess I'm still struggling with the staffing change from what we have in the CAFR.
The CAFR shows budgeted positions for 11, 12. So what we've compared here is budgeted positions for 12, 13 versus 13, 14. So the CAFR's one year back. So the difference between the CAFR number and this number would be the cuts we made in 12, 13.
Last year.
Last year. Because we did have some staffing position cuts last year as well. So we've gone from, I'm sorry, help me with the page on the CAFR.
146.
We've gone from 451 in 11, 12 to 430 in 12, 13, to 400 proposed for 13, 14.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mark, good morning.
Good morning, all. I'm Mark Newchurch, 617 Indian Lye Lock Road. I came in a couple of minutes late. I didn't, so I wanted to ask whether or not we'll be able to comment on individual items, or speak now, or forever hold your peace?
All the above.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Your name and address, please, sir?
My name is John Campani. My address is 1392 West Island Club Square in Vero Beach. I would like to commend the committee of the council on regarding the budget. I only wish our federal government was so inclined. My concern is about the animal control position that's on the blocks to be eliminated. I think we're very fortunate to be here in Florida. We've got a lovely area. Unfortunately, snakes and alligators and other critters feel the same way. I think snakes and alligators pose a danger to us. And I know there's, have been some incidents where people have been injured by both of those, both of those kind of animals. Safety is important. I know we've got the police to concern ourselves with, lifeguards, fire, emergency rescue. By eliminating animal control, we're eliminating 100% of that entity. I hope the council will consider, or reconsider eliminating that function. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Cornelia Perez, 2019, Cortez Avenue. And I, that's in McGan's Park, and I've lived there since 1948. And don't get your calculators out. Figuring. I'm here, as was the gentleman previously, to speak on behalf of retaining animal control position. I want to lay out a few solid reasons why we should. It's going to be hard for me to, because I think Bruce Dangerfield has done a wonderful job, to completely eliminate him from my discussion, although I'd like to see him retained. But the position is very important. Due to budgetary cutbacks, he's going to soon be out of a job, but I'll tell you, the animals, domestic and wild, the children, the most vulnerable, are even going to be bigger losers. For the past 13 years, animal control under Bruce has done an incredible job. Living in McGan's Park, it's, well, you know, Mr. Fletcher, it's a haven for raccoons, possums, feral cats. Before Bruce was there, our son was bitten by a raccoon, ran off into the underbrush, he went through rabies treatment, and we were a concerned family. Bruce came on, I know, that in our one block in McGan's Park, I know he has trapped more than 35 raccoons. There's no way I can count the number of possums and feral cats he's caught. These animals are a danger to us. He has done a great job teaching our children about wildlife, to be careful about snakes. We don't have the problem, other places do now, with pythons. You've heard of stories, I mean, they'll attack anything. They're going to go for you, a small child, a domestic pet. He taught them how to react to a strange dog. Very important. I'm sure many children have not been bitten because of Bruce's advice. Even closer to our hearts, Bruce has been a help to lost, neglected, and abused animals. I have an elderly widow neighbor who lost her only child, a black cat. That cat was her reason for getting up in the morning and making it through the day. She's now 88. That cat is critical to her. Bruce pulled out every cat trapping trick in his bag, and he finally caught that cat and took it back to her. She will never, ever forget it. He's also cared for neglected and abused animals. We don't see this in our county and in the front of our papers, like many counties do. We don't have this kind of abuse because of Bruce Dangerfield, or an animal control officer who cares as much. His presence is known, so people, if they see an abuse case, would call him immediately and it's taken care of. He is certainly the most compassionate animal control officer I have ever met, and many people agree with me. Probably all these reasons explain why, a few years ago, he was elected Animal Control Officer of the Year by the state of Florida. And for us to consider doing away with this position, whatever good man would be in it, is a great concern to me. We're not an impoverished city or county. I know there are budgetary problems. We all have it in our homes, too. But we have to look carefully and decide what our real needs can be. Mahatma Gandhi said, and I quote, "The greatness of a society is the, and its moral progress can be judged by the way it treats its animals." Let Vero Beach be a great society. Thank you very much for letting me speak on a subject that's very important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Laura Gotrich. I live at 535 Date Palm Road. Bruce Dangerfield, for years, has gone above and beyond providing the very important service of animal control to our community. What will happen when it's discovered that someone is hoarding animals, or that a feral cat population has gotten out of control? Being a volunteer for the Humane Society myself, I have assisted Bruce on many calls. Together, we have rescued wildlife trapped in attics, and relocated displaced tortoises, just to name a few. I can vividly remember one afternoon when Bruce received a call about a pelican in distress. The pelican was helplessly tangled in the mangroves on one of the spoil islands. We could see the distressed pelican with binoculars, but we couldn't get to him. We needed a boat. However, Bruce, being the determined individual he is, was able to get someone from a nearby marina to let us actually borrow a boat. Together, we were able to reach the distressed pelican. I held the boat in place while Bruce gently cut away the fishing line. What does this single story demonstrate? It demonstrates Bruce's ability to respond to individual situations. People trust him in this community. That's how he was able to get the boat so easily. That kind of resourcefulness and connection and trust from the community is irreplaceable. In fact, Mark Schuman conducted a poll recently in inside Vero Beach, and an overwhelming 93% of the votes went in favor to keep in Bruce's job. I think that speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Your name and address, please?
Good morning. My name is Elka Daniel, and I'm the Director of Animal Protection for the Humane Society of Vero Beach. The address is 6230 77th Street. And it wasn't too terribly long ago, we had the opportunity to come before you to be recognized for our 60 years of service for Indian River County. And we truly, truly value the opportunity to provide those services and partner with the city on that. In looking at the animal control position, the position actually, going back and researching it, was conducted by sworn police officers back in the 1970s. And at that time, as the city's population was growing and as the needs were growing, it was recognized that there was a need for a trained animal control professional to come in to service the residents of this community, simply because the problems were extremely diverse. They included wildlife, and they also included domestic animals. So in the early 1980s, the position of Animal Control Officer was added to the city of Vero Beach's police department. In looking at what the Florida Animal Control Association and the City and County Management Association recognizes as adequate staffing for an animal control officer for the residents, they look at a number between 15,000 and 18,000 as requiring one responding field officer for that number of residents. And in looking at the city of Vero Beach, you've currently got about 15,000 residents. So that is what enables our animal control officer's position to be so responsive to the needs of the community. He's able to go out on those calls, he's able to diligently investigate when that needs to be done. As Mrs. Perez indicated, when an animal's lost, he's able to respond if it requires repeated efforts. We deal with, we quarantine animal control bite cases, those dogs that are deemed dangerous that have bitten residents. They're brought to our Humane Society. Many, many times, we work with the Health Department where a person is bitten by an animal, and that animal cannot be retrieved. Those people currently have to undergo post-rabies exposure. Due to the city's staffing level, they are able to respond and capture many of those animals. We have families repeatedly call us, saying that we did not have to undergo rabies post-exposure because the animal control officer was able to take the time. In looking at the county's population, we're looking at 140,000 residents in the county. And we have four field officers for Indian River County Animal Control. According to staffing requirements and best management practices, they should have a total of 7.8 officers responding. We currently, in the county, have one field officer per 35,000 residents. That greatly reduces their effectiveness and their response time due to their constraints. Adding the city's burden to that would take that number and increase it to almost 39,000 residents for one field officer. So as you can see, that would, that would put a tremendous hardship on everyone. And in looking at what the Florida Animal Control Association and the City Management Association recommends animal control services consist of, and they do qualify those as essential services, it is to uniformly enforce laws related to public health and safety, respond to nuisance complaints in a timely manner, investigate complaints of abuse and neglect, rescue mistreated and injured animals, and then, of course, our Humane Society partners in reuniting many of those animals with their owners. So we work closely with animal control. What we would like very, very much, and I speak on behalf of our executive director and our membership, is the fact that we feel it is an essential service, rather than a value-added service, due to the hardship that it would impose on our community. It would also lower the response times significantly. And what we can't measure is the cost of human and animal suffering that this is going to cause, simply because we cannot meet the needs of the community. So we would respectfully ask that you reconsider and reinstate this position, and I thank you very, very much for the opportunity to speak before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
Hi, I have a question.
Sure.
In the county, do the county officers trap wild animals and take them somewhere else?
It totally depends on their call load and what they're able to do. They do respond to injured animals and nuisance animals. Yeah.
I was told on a telephone call that they didn't trap, if you saw a raccoon or a possum in your yard, they wouldn't normally trap them.
No, no. They're not able, again, due to those...
That is something that he's doing here, is that correct?
Yeah. That's something he's able to provide, due to the fact that the staffing is adequate, and the county just can't. You know, unfortunately, an officer usually, if they respond to a complaint, the county officer can only go back to that residence maybe once, maybe twice. They can't put forth the effort. If an injured animal's located, that, you know, it takes time. It takes time to go back and trap those animals to make sure that they're not a threat to the community. The other thing that I wanted to mention also, very briefly, and I forgot to mention, was in placing animals in patrol officers' cars, because the police department is going to be required, you know, they're going to have those instances where an animal does need to ride in a patrol car. That is going to pose a serious public health and safety risk to the residents being transported in those cars, not only from internal and external parasites, but if you have a resident that goes into anaphylactic shock because they're allergic to an animal, that animal, that person's not going to be paying a visit to the county jail. He's going to be going to the emergency room. So again, it's a public health and safety risk all the way around, and the city currently is providing exemplary services. And to reduce that, we feel, would just impose a tremendous hardship.
And one last question. Does the city of Sebastian, their residents, do they rely on county services?
They also have to rely on county services, yes.
As well as in Indian River Shores, Orchid Island, Felsmere, all the other incorporated areas in the county, correct?
And again, and that, that just is an example of how difficult it is. They cannot possibly respond with the staffing and the budgetary constraints they have, because they're already seriously understaffed.
Does the county respond to reptile calls? Or do they rely on Bruce to do that?
Well, Bruce Dangerfield, through his position with the city of Vero Beach, and due to his own generosity, has been responding to the Indian River County Sheriff's Department for over 40 years on reptile calls and animals of concern. And that's something that he's done to volunteer his own time. But yes, he does respond to that. The county generally calls either Bruce or myself. If Bruce is off duty, if not, I'll go and assist them with it. But currently, there really isn't anyone to handle those concerns. And the city has actually had some Savannah monitors and, you know, pythons and things like that. So, yeah, it's, it's a serious safety concern.
Jim, have there been occasions where the officer is on duty at the time and does provide services to the county residents, or to emergencies that take place?
Our animal control officer happens to have a lot of connections with everyone throughout the community, and he does respond a lot of times on his own time to calls involving in the unincorporated areas. He obviously, when he's on our payroll, he has to get permission from the, from the department in order to respond to something outside the city, but we'll do that. It's my understanding... city, but we'll do that. It's my understanding, the animal control for the county handles domestic calls. The Sheriff's Department, it's my understanding, if there's going to be a danger or something, for example, wild animal, they probably will go, but, you know, they don't trap animals, per se.
Yeah. They generally call us in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mutcher?
Mark Mutcher, again. This, this is one of the items I was going to talk about, but since it's being so heavily discussed now, I thought I'd try and straighten some things out and, and ask some questions. Maybe Elka can follow up. I was going to ask Tracy's question, because I hear things like, well, they, the county only does dogs and cats. And I, I guess that's not true, although they don't have the expertise, or the time, or the skills that, that Bruce has, which leads me to another thing. Are we really talking about Bruce? Are we talking about a generic animal control officer or position? I think if you do keep this position, you ought to keep it until Bruce chooses to retire and, and then let go of it. And, and the reason I say that, and, and what some of the people have been talking about, is that, well, if we eliminate this position, there will be no animal control in, in Vero. Polash shaking her head. The fact is that we pay the same to the county for animal control as everybody else. So, we're paying twice for animal control, once to the city and once to the county. If the county animal control needs to be beefed up, then so be it. We're, we're paying our, our fair share for that. Now, I'm, I, I love Bruce. I think he does a great job. And, and I'm not saying this to, you know, be in favor of eliminating his position. I just want you to have the facts and, and not deal with, you know, all the emotions involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning. Your name and address, please?
Good morning. Joe Simmons, 812 Hibiscus Lane. I'm here on behalf of Little League Baseball. Basically, Little League Baseball needs the support of the city on only one item, just the lights. That's all we ask. There's no employee, no salary, no pension. It's just one item. But without that item, baseball and softball kind of can't go on the way we know it. And Michael's Field will turn into a little gem of a trash heap. We can't afford to run Michael's Field, Thompson Field, and the softball fields and the senior league fields. And all it is, basically, that we ask from the city, is just the lights. That's basically all I have. I coach. I sponsor a team. I do everything I can. And the kids, the kids really love it. And we, we haven't been able to find support from the county or from anywhere else. And it's just too much to ask for sponsors to put up that cost.
Do you know what that budget number is?
I was told in a meeting last week that the budget number is $30,000 for all four organizations, for American League, National League, the senior leagues over by Beechland Elementary, and then the girls' softball.
So, you're asking just restoration of what we presently do?
Correct. Correct. No more, no less. I mean, it could even maybe be a little bit less. We could scramble, but that's what we ask.
We're looking at a number of about $24,000 to $25,000, round numbers, is what we budgeted, would have budgeted for this year for Little League.
Somewhere around there. Correct. I believe that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Council, and Mayor Fletcher, staff. My name is Mike Urrigan. I live at 445 Forty-Fifth Court in Vero Beach. I'm in the county. I am here also to discuss a little bit of the Little League information that we have. I've been involved with the Little League since I returned from Orlando in 2008. And I've met with Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Sleizak. And I actually watched Mr. Sleizak pitch at Vero Beach at Dodger Town back in the early 80s. And he had a nice curveball. But it's, it's interesting that we're at this crossroads because of, of all the things that have happened over the last several years. I'm in the golf business. Mayor Fletcher knows. Most of the community knows. And I spend a lot of time with youth, with the community. In 2005, when we moved back from Orlando, when I did graduate from Vero Beach High School, and we spent a lot of time in trying to resurrect the Little League in Vero Beach. J. Dean was the president when I arrived back in 2005. Somehow, I got my arm twisted, and I ended up president for the next two years. Dave Lucci was then president after that for two years, Mike Warren, and now G.T. Paris, which a lot of you know in the community, and his brother Matt, and Gary. So, there's, there's a lot of community support behind Little League. We're in this crossroads, again, as I said, with Vero Beach National, Vero Beach American. We've had meetings in the last couple of weeks discussing about how we could possibly merge those two entities, so it's not national and American. We've got Gifford involved. We've got a lot of community support. As Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Sleizak has said, you know, we, we are in that budgetary problem like everyone else. We have to raise X amount of funds. Right now, it's, we spend about, we actually charge around $90 a player. We do have sponsorship. The fees for the kids to play is around $125. So, you can see, we go out in the community, we get sponsorship. We do everything we can to try to grow the game. And I, I won't take a mu- much of your time. I just, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a, of a passion that we all have. I've had three sons go through the Little League. I have a junior at the Vero Beach High School. I have a ninth grader that's going to the flick. And I also have a seventh grader that's at Gifford. They all played baseball. They all were very fortunate enough to have their mom's ability, and they all were all-stars. And I kind of wore my shirt today and the kid's name on the back. So, I'm pretty proud of that. So, that's a tradition, as you all know, with Dodger Town, everything that's gone on in this community over the last 50 or 60 years. My son also wore number 42, Jackie Robinson. That's one of his idols. He looks up to him. So, what I don't want to have happen, as someone that's very passionate about this, and not only in the golf community that I am, but also in baseball and all the other sports that I support in this community, is that we can't let $25,000 dictate whether or not we have Little League in Vero Beach in the next several years. Right now, as you know, we have the county field, I'm sorry, not the county field. We lease the, at Rosewood Magnet, we lease that field from the school board. And we have to get permission every year to do that. So, you can see, we're in this, kind of this tangled mess. We've got a lot to try to figure out how to do in the next couple of years. Rosewood might go in reconstruction and take away our fields. We just have to figure out how to get that community together and try to raise a few extra funds, work with Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Sleizak on our budgetary problems, find where we can come up with that $24,000. But, as you know, the Martin County Little League went almost all the way to Williamsport this year. They were two ballgames away. And the, Mark Rogers, who was the manager of that team, was a guest columnist in the newspaper. And one of the things at the end of his comments and his article about the experience, he said to the community at whole District 17, from Sebastian all the way to Hope Sound, "Your kindness embroiled us. We are proud of you to be your team. Your thoughtfulness and pride helped us reorganize the larger purpose in our journey. We talked about representing this area and exhibiting what we can happen in a little town where children and youth sports are still the priority, where the children and the youth sports are priority, and the adults embrace the values of shaping tomorrow's leaders of today." So, we're just asking for a little help. We're looking at, we know all the things that are going on with FPNL, and you're trying to sell the, the project. You know, the City of Vero Beach owns the power. We need a little bit of support. I know we can do it in the community. We have a lot of great people in this community that can help us, if it's a fundraising, whatever that is. I am stepping down from the board after eight years. I'm excited about what the future is. I know what the situations are with all the budgets and everything that we have. But we have to come up with that. We can't lose Little League Baseball in Vero Beach. And we don't want another entity coming in and taking that from us. So, anything we can do, what anything you can do, Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Sleizak, I appreciate it. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. Ken Dag, 1846 Twenty-first Avenue, Vero Beach. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today, and thank you for putting it on the agenda where the public can speak out. You've heard on some issues that are very dear to all of us here in this community. We started out with the cemetery issue. And I want to thank Mrs. Loy, Mr. Young. Those are two dedicated community servants. Thank you for your comments. On the cemetery issue, it is very dear to a lot of us. The selling it or leasing it really should not be on the table. Also, the outside maintenance contractor that you could use in the cemetery, I want to tell you right now, the outside contractor that you're using right now on your maintenance is not working out very well. I've showed Mr. O'Connor and Councilmember Winger. They've sent you all photos. I know you're aware of it. On the cemetery, I would ask you to consider here in the very, very near future, because I think you have time to do it, is consider protecting it and putting it into the charter, like we have other properties. All the years that I've been involved with the city, I don't know of this coming to the table like this, where the city was thinking about leasing it or selling it off. I think the property needs to be protected, and I think we have the time to do that. So, in your discussions, I would ask that one of you council members would bring it up and put it on the table about protecting that land, please. It's important to a lot of us. If you heard about the other positions here, animal control, the Little League needs your help. Our animal control officer has done so much in this community. He's reached out to the county. He does a lot for the county. It's too much, if you eliminate that position. You've heard from the director of the adverse effect it can have. So, you're hearing from a good section of the community. This is what's been out on the block here of late. These positions can't be cut. I don't think it's a good idea to do what you're going to do with the cemetery. I don't want to dwell too long on the maintenance. I may come back later and explain some more to you all about that. But please consider what everyone has to say today. While you're doing your work, you are the policymakers at this time. You are the decision makers. Please find a way to help us with what you heard today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dag. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Mr. Connor, you want to, you and Cindy want to take us into this?
Yes, sir, we will. You have a cover memo that each member of the council should have received, that sort of gives an outline. And our attempt here was, is to consolidate what we discussed between July the 8th and July the 12th into the budget itself, and reflecting, understanding that the budget is really a council policy moving forward. And what we try to do is take your policy directives, put it into the budget itself. One of the items that does stand out is the 4.62. And that is not a pay increase. That's restoration from actually four years ago, where we took furlough days for two years before I got here. I'm not a big fan of furlough days, because I think they have additional costs associated with it. And we did a reduction of those, making 70,000 and above by 4.62%. We were able to balance the budget on the backs of those folks. As I indicated during that week, these are the same people that helped us put together the budget that I think reflects the direction that you wanted to go, i.e. the reduction of positions and reduction of cost overall in the city operation. So, I, I think that's a very critical item. The last sentence that we put into the, and this is under summary, "As a result, it would be anticipated the only minor adjustments would be needed going forward, providing stability to the city organization and service levels in the future." What that implied, and what that was intended for, is the city council, during our discussions during those meetings in July, you said you wanted to take the big hit in one particular year, and then it would be just minor tweaking going forward. That's what we tried to do in this. We took the major hit in this year. We did modify, based on council direction. We took the sale of the electric utility out of this fiscal year and really put it on a basis of anticipated revenues. But at the same time, when you reduce by 30 positions, please understand that that is a very critical blow to the organization itself, when you take 10 positions out of Public Works, as an example. And I've indicated to some of you in our discussions that I, I'm not as concerned that we'll be able to deliver the service. And we can contract out and, and find private sector to come in. We have our challenges in some of those. But if a hurricane comes, everyone needs to understand, getting out there in the streets and cleaning the, the trees out of the way, we do have contractors. We have contracts for that, as the council knows. But in many cases, based on the history of what I've been able to see and read, we also had city personnel out there. So, that is, those are some of the consequences. And I realize, hopefully, in my tenure with the City of Vero Beach, we will not have a hurricane, and I will not have to experience that anxiety that goes along with it. But those are little things that we just need to keep in the forefront of our discussions.
Mr. O'Connor, but I guess my problem with that is that we are staffing for crisis, or we're staffing for peak periods. Instead of staffing for the norm, and then going and supplementing those staffing needs, and I would like to see us staff for our normal workload.
And, and that's really where we're going on this. But, again, the City of Vero Beach, as I understand it, based on discussions with colleagues, we were able to clean our city up, get our power restored and all that good stuff, pretty quickly, in relative terms. But you're right. We are, there's a price to pay for that, if you wish to do it. It's sort of like everything else.
Yeah. It's carrying that staff, full-time, year-round, pensions, healthcare, everything else for maybe one in 40-year occurrence.
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, as a procedural suggestion, why don't we go through the book as it's written? And I have questions on some items, don't have questions on others, starting with revenue, just work our way through.
We can certainly do that. Cynthia, you have any opening statement?
Cynthia, yes, please.
Just a couple of quick comments, and I think that's a great idea, to put the whole thing in perspective. I think the first one that's really important to point out, because I've actually had a couple of people ask me about this. Based on your direction from July 8th through the 12th, this budget, in both the general fund and the electric utility, represents a full year of us operating our electric utility. We have taken the assumption that we would sell the electric utility at some point during next fiscal year, and we've put that aside. So, in both the general fund and in all the other funds, it represents, as a result, a full year of pension costs, both the normal costs and the unfunded liability contribution, based on the most recent actuarial valuation, which actually is a little higher than prior fiscal year. It represents a full year of revenues and expenses for the electric utility. And it also represents a restoration of those cuts in staffing and operating expenses that we've always said would happen as a natural result of the sale of the electric utility, which amounts to about $600,000 that we think will happen just naturally as a part of the sale. So, those are all off the table as part of this budget.
Mr. Sars, if I can interrupt a minute, just for a trick, a trick question. During the pension discussions, it said that we would now be taking out the pension cost from the fund itself. Can you tell me why that came up?
I'm not sure which.
Hang on.
Basically, what we're doing is what we've done in past years, where each fund, the total actuarial valuation, in terms of what we have to put in as our pension contribution?
No, this is their, their cost, the prudential, I guess, monitoring the fund that we said that was going to be taken from the fund.
Oh, actually, you're talking about the newly constituted pension board, and the costs of administration of that pension board would, would actually be taken out of the prudential investments themselves. So, you know, it's kind of the same way that the Police Department handles them. But we're talking about just administrative costs that would come out of the prudential fund for this newly constituted board. For instance, our attorneys that we just hired.
Great. Thank you.
The general fund budget that you have in front of you is balanced, and actually better than balanced. And we can talk about that as we go through the numbers, at the prior year adopted millage rate, which is what you adopted on July the 12th as a not-to-exceed, and it was certified to the county property appraiser. And I think the thing to keep in context here is that what we would hope as an outcome of this workshop is some good direction as to what you'd like for us to bring you on September the 3rd, which is your first public hearing, and the first place where you'll formally adopt a tentative budget, and also set your tentative millage. The, the staffing and the salaries, Jim spoke about the 4.62%, but also, I wanted to kind of just recap, as we talked earlier, about what the changes were. We now have a decrease of 30 positions citywide, as opposed to 43 when we looked at it back on July the 8th. The ones that were restored were a full-time cashier, and also the permanent part-time cashiers in the finance department. And per your direction, that cashier window will remain open at the current hours pending our completion of a our completion of a six-month plan to either restructure that function or eliminate it. And we have already had our bank in to do a business process review. They spent a full day with our cashiers and are coming back to us hopefully in about a month with a series of recommendations for optimizing our efficiency in that, in those positions down there. We did restore.
Does that optimization include the utilization of credit cards?
The optimization for the cashiering window eventually will. Two or three of the ones that are kind of no brainers for us that should help a whole bunch are electronic capture of bank-to-bank payments as opposed to those checks that are produced, and just a few other things that I think Wells Fargo is going to put on the table in terms of upgrading our electronic capabilities.
But credit cards are a part of that discussion.
I would think so. I think we discussed that that was very important.
Right.
And then passing on the fees to the customer, of course, because we wouldn't need to take those fees out.
We are, are we implementing credit card thing for, let me make sure I get this right, we've got recreation, planning, and we're looking at the Marina next. As far as the utility bills go, we're trying to make sure that we don't spend the money to do that integration twice, because it may be vastly different for 33,000 utility customers and the electric utility as opposed to what our plan is after we sell the electric utility. So we're trying to work with the bank to make sure that we don't duplicate effort, spend a bunch of money for some implementation, and then have to re-spend it once we sell the electric utility.
It would just seem that if we did it in time period, the same technology that we would then utilize would be going forward for when we divest of the electrical system, and we still have water sewer and solid waste and all the other bills that are still coming out of the city.
Right.
I would agree, it should be applicable no matter how many, yeah, customers you have.
It should be, but here's the thing that's been on the table, and I know we've talked about it. We have a very complicated billing system, and it's complicated because we have an electric utility. And it is not very user-friendly, not very customizable. I know each and every one of you have asked for reports that have to be programmed by Caientia. And so one of the things we've considered is that even the people that run our current accounting software have a very simple, off-the-shelf water sewer billing software system that plays well with the rate structure, for instance, that we just implemented in Indian River Shores. And so what myself, my IT people, my cashiers, and the bank are all looking at together is to sort of lay out a timeline where would it be cost-effective for us once we don't have the electric utility to simplify our billing system tremendously and maybe save a lot of money there.
Are we tied via contract to the Caientia system, a specified period of time?
We're tied annually to a contract with them, but I mean, it's a contract. And so as we work with them to transition to FPNL and remove that part from the billing, you know, one of the things we've talked about is buying a much simpler billing system. So we've got that. You know, the billing system has to play with, our general ledger has to play with the bank, and so we're trying to make sure that we've got a plan for moving forward that takes all that into consideration and does it smoothly without duplicating costs.
So there's a lot of moving parts that have to all come to make this wheel work.
But our ultimate goal is absolutely what you just said. We want to make a real web portal where our utility customers can come online, manage their own bills extensively, paid by credit cards, and that will over time allow us to really streamline our customer service department even when we just have water and sewer.
Okay, great. Would you like to start off, Mr. Winger?
Well, I'd just like to go through the book.
I don't think the session's completed. A couple more.
That affect every fund. We did put back, as you know, the 10 full-time dispatch services personnel, and also we took away from our capital budget, the capital costs that were associated with that. We did reinstate one full-time lifeguard position. The health insurance costs still reflect an increase of 17.2%. Internally, we're having some meetings and working with that to try to make sure that we can stay within those numbers as closely as possible or even better than.
Yeah, I would be interested in some options on this healthcare and whether it's setting up a cafeteria-type plan, you know, a bit of healthcare benefits for the employee and say, hey, you've got this much money to spend, how you, you know, what insurance, how you want to cover it, what deductibles, what you need, you know, and start getting some control. I realize part of that's new negotiation, but things we could do for a new hire and exempt employees and start trying to get a handle around our, this issue.
And understood, we have been all of those things. This budget does reflect the offer that we have on the table. It has part of our union negotiations to move in the direction of lowering our costs by eliminating high plan and also by lowering the city's overall subsidy of plans. In other words, our proposal is that we will subsidize the base plan, but not a higher percentage of any other plan. And so if an employee wants the middle plan, that's fine, but the city's, it's cafeteria-like in that the city's contribution to your base plan is fixed, and everything above that belongs to you. So we're trying to.
I look forward to seeing, yes, some more proposed development of this area.
I have a question. That total 17.2% in health insurance rates is equivalent to what dollar volume that the city was required to come up with this year that they didn't last year? I tried, I'm sorry, but I could not find.
One second, let me pull, I've got that.
Also, just for informational purposes, that really does reflect what's happening in the industry today with the changes and.
I run a small business. I got hit with that already.
The total, the total increase, it was sort of a series of puts and takes. Overall, health insurance went up citywide $160,000. The increase in health insurance costs would have taken it up by $619,000. But we had two other things. Obviously, we eliminated 30 positions, so that helped us by $270,000. And we also had a pretty substantial shift in our enrollment from last year. So our average costs went down, and we saved about $189,000 over last year's budget by the shift in enrollment that took place when we restructured our plans last year.
And our average cost is what?
Our average cost budgeted per position for this coming fiscal year is about $9,300.
$9,300, thank you.
Mark, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, Mark Mutcher, again, I had a question for Cindy. You called out the health insurance at 17.2% or whatever as a major item of concern. I was looking at a couple of the first departments, and they are smaller departments, but I noticed the pension went up 20, pension contribution went up 21%. Can you explain that?
We did have, what we have is a situation where we budget for next year's pension using last year's budget number. We won't have an updated number till March of this coming year, and so it changes midway through each budget year as we get the actuarial valuation. With our actuarial valuation from this past March, we did have an increase of about $200,000 citywide in the budgeted actuarial contribution, because it was the last year that we were phasing in those '08-'09 losses. So in an abundance of caution, we always use the most current valuation to budget for the coming year. So yes, there was increase. If what we think is going to happen happens next March, and not only a fairly good year of performance for the last two years, but we don't have to continue to phase in those 2008 losses, we may actually see an actuarial valuation that is a reduction and will be incorporated in a budget amendment. But yes, the short answer is yes. By the valuation that we currently have, the overall pension costs went up about $200,000 citywide.
Our investment returns over the last two years have been very, very good, so.
Well, that, I don't know if any of those explanations explain a 20% increase. That's huge.
If you look at the actuarial valuation, and I'd be happy to provide it from March, that was part of the CAFER. Actually, there's an explanation of it in the CAFER. We had, probably the two biggest factors were, one, you know, when you reduce staff, it leapfrogs over a year before you can take it into account in the actuarial valuation. But more importantly, we had that one final year of distribution of losses because of the smoothing that sent the valuation contribution number up. So again, I'd be happy if you'd like to provide you.
But that smoothing took place last year.
That smoothing is a five-year, five-year time span.
Well, it took, but it, we, there was a smoothing factor last year, and this is the last year of the smoothing. But you're using that as an explanation for it going up 21%.
Again, if you'd like, I can provide you a copy of the actuarial valuation. The first couple of pages are a synopsis of the three or four primary impacts on the valuation.
There's an explanation in the CAFER.
There's an explanation in the CAFER, and even a better one in the actual actuarial valuation report. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to provide you with a copy of it.
Is this something we can make a budget adjustment when that number actually comes in?
We do. Unfortunately, for a particular year, we're going to have to make a budget adjustment up, but what I would anticipate, and I hate to guess.
But we have to wait until that March.
Have to wait until March.
Cindy, do you have to talk? Insurance, in that the health insurance rate has went up $200,000 that the city must pay for the employees that we will, are budgeted for next year, have we had any discussions of having that 17.2% rate increase to the current employees? Or is that something we cannot just pass along?
You won't be able to pass those along. You have to negotiate that it's, there's a split. And that's, I think, what Cindy was explaining in our Teamsters contract. We will be splitting that 17% with some of the, with the employees, but it'll be based on a new formula that we are negotiating at this point.
In other words, we're trying to, in the past, in past years, we didn't pass the 17.2%, or the increases got passed along because the city's subsidy of the health insurance is a percentage of the then-current premium. So we shared the increases. But the city's subsidy was a percentage of the premium at every tier. So if we subsidized, you know, 75% of spouse and employee, when we got to that second tier, the middle plan or the high plan, our subsidy, our amount that we contributed toward health insurance actually went up as a percentage of the plan. What we're proposing now is that we will subsidize the percentage of the base plan, and anything more than that that you want is fine, but you pay for it. In other words, the city's contribution is a fixed percentage of the base plan and nothing more. So that plus eliminating the high plan.
Some progress.
Is, we're making, I think we're making progress. And what I saw from last year when we eliminated those plans or restructured that middle is we had a big shift in enrollment down toward those lower plans. Not only does it save us money, but it also begins to lower the actual costs and experience in the plan, which over time should help to stabilize the rates. So, but that is, that is the proposal that we have on the table right now that we're bargaining.
Now, for police, they will still have three plans, so they will have the top plan. The key is how much that costs, that top plan.
Thank you.
Anything else, Cindy?
Yeah, she's still going through that.
Last couple of things, we're almost there. Again, as I already pointed out, the electric utility budget assumes that we operate the electric utility for the entire fiscal year. At this point in time, the budgeted revenues and the purchase power expenses that are in there are based on the most recent version of the electric utility rate sufficiency that we did in July. And obviously, we will be updating that based on some final forecasts from the city's providers and an updated sufficiency analysis for next year, probably in September timeframe or so.
Probably September, October.
Okay, well, then I look forward to having been at the FMPA meeting and seeing the power cost from our projects. The Stanton, our power cost in Stanton, $174 projected for next year. For Stanton II, 92.26, this is per megawatt hour, and even for St. Lucie's at 89.66. And I bring this to your attention because the FPL rate for power is 93.23. So if we are paying more for our power, base power from FMPA than the retail rate of FPL, you know, where do we have to go? And I know it's been said before about going to get at the OUC. Actually, the OUC power cost rates are better. It gives us a blended rate. But it's the FMPA power costs that exceed the retail rate of FPL that is really is what put us, continues to put us in a bind.
Well, that's really an apples to oranges comparing wholesale to retail. The, you know, I've just got done talking with FMPA, and we don't have to buy power out of Stanton one and towards St. Lucie. We can buy it out of OUC. You're not required to buy the power. You are required to pay the fixed cost, but you're not required to buy the power. In fact, they keep Stanton one off, and you buy it from OUC, which is at a considerably cheaper rate.
Yeah, which we've been able to do for the blending, but I'm just saying that this is, yeah, the.
Those high rates that you mentioned, we're not really.
Yeah, but the high rates is part of our commitment, but that's our commitment with it there, our involvement with FMPA.
The commitment is on the fixed, not on the variable.
Notwithstanding the discussions about the rates that we're paying, I know personally that I've spoken to a lot of people in the community recently who, as we see in cyclical nature of our rates, I'm sorry, of our bills with the high summer usage, there's a lot of customers out there who are very distressed by their rates. And of course, it has, it's a factor of the weather we've had and the rain and everything. So I just want to make sure that we're all, you know, keep in touch with our people in the community who are very concerned about the rates they've had and the bills that they've been getting over the summer.
Oh, keep in mind, the policy of the city is not to get the rates down, it's to sell to FPNL. The focus is not on the rates.
Cindy, do you have anything else?
I guess the last thing is that the water sewer utility budget shows a surplus still of about 2.6 million, but I just want to remind everyone, that's artificially inflated by 1.1 million. We paid off some debt service early. We have a one-year vacation, if you will, from the principal amount before the next principal payment kicks in in 14, 15. And so it's good, but that 1.1 million will come back to us naturally in 14, 15, and I want to make sure we all understand that. And then the five-year capital program that's in there has had a few updates primarily in airport as, because of some movement in grants. And other than that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have as we go through this.
Mr. Mayor, can we start on revenue and work our way down?
Just give us a page number where you are.
I am on page number five.
Yes. You said in your opening statement that the budget was better than balanced. Can you numerically explain that?
If you look, actually, we'll go to the page that Councilman Winger just called out, because that's where the answer is. If you go to page.
Page five.
Page five? Sorry, that roll-up's in there now, it's confusing. If you look at the bottom of the page there on revenues, you see unappropriated surplus. As we've talked about before, a minus number is a good thing. That is a positive unappropriated surplus. So right now, the budget sits at balanced with a $312,620 unappropriated surplus.
While we're on that subject, can we discuss our reserve position? And I know these unrestricted balances we have dug into repeatedly year after year looking at the CAFER. And I would just like to say, hey, you know, if anything happens, what our position would be?
Actually, as of this fiscal year, and the way we budgeted for last fiscal year, we had another one of those early debt service payments that made things look a little confusing, was the first year in a while that we actually have not, other than that debt service, had to kind of dip into reserves at fiscal year end.
That's my concern.
Yeah, we actually had an improvement.
We have repeatedly done so though in the past. So I said that pattern, so I want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're continuing to have, yeah, not to deplete our reserves and to have that cushion.
I think what we've done, and we've had some conversation about this with the Finance Commission. When Jim and I first came on board that particular fiscal year, that was a, that was a big surprise at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, that's not the surprises we want to have. Try to avoid those in the future.
So we actually have, over the last two years, you know, implemented some budgetary controls, done very good quarterly analysis of variances, paid close attention with the help of the Finance Commission to where we stood budget to actuals, and have really not had that kind of experience either for fiscal 11, 12, or for 12, 13 is looking very good as well. So certainly, we think we've turned around that performance from the past. Right now, your audited fund balance at the end of the year for 11, 12 in the general fund was about $7.8 million, and a big proportion of that is, you know, unrestricted. So if you look at that in the context of your annual expenditures of 19 million or so, what is that, 35, 40%? So I would say you're in a place where you have a very comfortable fund balance, and that makes me happy. But yes, we, I don't think we want to do anything but continue the progress toward state.
It's right at 90 days operational funds, which is a good safety.
Certainly, I want to confirm. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Mr. Winger?
Yes, I'm working on page five of the proposed budget and page six of the general ledger. I may be the only one with the general ledger, but it's a, yeah, I'm working from a June general ledger, which is 75% of the year. The first question for you, Cindy, on the ad valorem tax, if you look at your handout, what you put in for rate sufficiency was $4,333.86, and yet, and it's a long question, so bear with me. What you put on the budget is $4,113, or about $200,000 less than was given to the county. Also, so far this year, and of course, we would have collected.
Can I, can I answer them? Can I answer them? Because that one's simple. We budget for 95% per TRIM law. We budget for 95% of the actual tax levy.
Okay, but let me finish the question. We have collected $4,112 year-to-date. Your budget is identical to what we've collected, and yet, you know, the tax rates went up slightly. What I'm saying, and I understand the 95%, but what I'm saying is I think your ad valorem tax is conservative.
And it typically is. Per TRIM law, and this is fairly standard, and this is what we're allowed to do per TRIM law, we budget for a number that's 95% of the levy. But if you look at our CAFER, our historical collections are probably more in the neighborhood of 97% or 96. If you look, there's actually a page in the CAFER that shows the actual collections versus the levy. And so what we end up with at the end of fiscal year is, if you will, a cushion, which generally amounts to like $60,000, $70,000, $80,000, again. generally amounts to like $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 against other revenues that may or not come in.
I, I accept that. I'm not trying to change it. And you have, I calculated, you have a cushion of about $100,000 there for what it's worth.
And again, it's a typically a 90, it's a 95% budget exactly. We're required by law. But you're right, we do do much better than that.
That's the pleasure of the council. I have no problem with it, but I just wanted to point it out because you have actually collected already, you know, this year, next year's budget, even though the property tax went up. My next question would be on the utility tax. You have, we have a budget... Bear with me here, a local communication tax, the utility tax, I don't have any problem with. We've actually, the budget is 1,342. With 75% of the year, we've done 1,122,000. If you straight-line that, that one looks like you're conservative, $75,000 or $80,000 for what it's worth. I, I could live with it. I'm just telling you, you are.
Well, on, there's about five revenue sources here that we don't estimate. We actually use the revenue estimates provided by the Florida Department of Revenue. And so, typically, they're, they're fairly well in line, but that's, that's the standard. For local communication services tax, for the local option gas tax, for the state revenue sharing, for the half-cent sales tax, and also for the one-cent sales tax, we take our annual revenue estimates from the Department of Revenue.
Okay, so, I mean, what I'm saying is, those two items, the first two I mentioned, are conservative, and that's okay. Now, if you go to alcoholic beverage tax, so far, we've collected 43 year-to-date. You have a budget of 45. It also looks conservative. I mean, I don't know that it's around, it's collected normally, but if so, it's $50,000.
Again, that one tends not to be a straight-line. It's like the, it's like the local business tax. There's a, a phase of renewals, and it's quarterly, so that's not one that's a good divide by eight or 12 and multiply by eight. It's not a pro rata.
Okay, the, the last one, which I really do think needs is code enforcement. You collected $38,000 year-to-date. You've got a budget of eight. And I, I think it's widely known that my view is that we need to be more stringent with code enforcement. Both our codes need to be such that they can be enforced, and then we need to enforce them. And I, I've sat in on meetings, code enforcement meetings and so on, and this city council has actually acted on some of these. I, I would submit to you, the $38,000 is some of the action that some of you have taken here, saying that we should collect more money than otherwise. I don't think your $8,000 is a big enough of a budget because I think we need to collect code enforcement.
I was gonna say, I still think we're, we're micromanaging. I mean, you know, $8,000 in the whole flag of this budget. I'm not sure, you know, or a couple of thousand here is gonna make a huge difference. We're trying to get the philosophy for...
It's a philosophical, Mrs. Turner. My, my view of government is if we have regulations, government, government is to protect people from people, and if we have regulations, we should enforce them. If we give our code enforcement officer, Mr. McGary, too low a goal, then he looks like he's doing a good job. And quite frankly, I'm not saying he's not, but I'm saying we should enforce our codes, and we should put something out there. So, it's philosophical. It's not $32,000, if you please.
And actually, you, you do make a good point, though, and we've been trying to capture this. The, the fines, the revenue side comes with an expenditure side. You know, there are costs associated with many of these, and sometimes those fines are cost recovery. In the past, those costs were sort of carried throughout different departments, and what we've discussed doing is actually establishing a line under the non-departmental for code enforcement costs, so that we can track accurately, year-to-year, what we're taking in in revenues versus what some of those costs actually are that we have to lean against properties when we do things like go out and do a demolition and things like that. So, but we're gonna have another look at trying to match those up so we get a good feeling of what kind of cost recovery we're having.
That's all I have on revenue, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, nope, whatever you want to go, wherever you want to go.
Let's, let's, let's work our way down through the book, which is city council next. Let's see, the next one in the book is... City council, I have nothing there, but I do for city clerk.
Can I do that on city council? We had an open motion from the last meeting that was never voted on, and that was on the healthcare. I mean, I don't care if you guys voted either way, but it was an open motion. We made a motion and a second to do away with the healthcare for the city council.
What was the motion? To do away with it?
Mr. Cometwood, that require a resolution of some sort?
Well, it, it is in the personnel rules, so we would need to amend the personnel rules and bring it back as a resolution.
Is that right?
No, it's not in the charter.
One of the things I have very strong feelings about is who is allowed to run for city council. By, by dropping the insurance and by the low rates that we have now for pay, we have literally disenfranchised a whole group of people that have just, just no opportunity to run for city council. Someone running a, a business, Ms. Carroll is lucky enough to be able to, she has some backup that can take...
And Jay does as well. She's in the business and pays.
Yeah, and Jay does too.
I'm in the business too, so...
But this, this would be disenfranchising another whole group of people to keep them from running for city council. I think we need to keep this. It's, if anything, it's a draw for, to get people to start trying to run.
I think that's a, that's a very admirable statement, and I would agree with it wholeheartedly. You know, my, my issue is the fairness of it. Why are you paid more than we are?
Because you don't choose to take the, the insurance.
So, should I choose to take the insurance?
That's personal, you know, that's a personal choice.
Okay. But it's, it's the unequaleness that I'm, that I'm, who got an issue with.
You're creating that inequality by not electing stuff.
The equality is, is there. And if I choose not to take it, it's because, you know, I've got a plan that I'm, I'm happy with, but nonetheless, I am not paid as much as other council members.
Well, there's, we can take the same argument to having parks in our city. I have kids, we use the parks, I use the marina. It's a benefit to every, anyone that lives in the city. You make your choice not to use the parks or the marina, and that's your choice. As employees, the employees may choose to go on the city medical plan. There are employees who may choose not to, the same way that the city council is an employee, may, make that choice to utilize something that is offered to them, but there's no ramifications to you if you personally choose to not make that choice.
Okay, then I can count to three. I'll withdraw a second.
Anything else under city council? Mr. Winger? No? What was your next one, Mr. Winger?
Uh, city clerk, and I have some handouts for you here. There are a series of three of them. Take one and pass.
Have the other ones.
What I'm concerned with here, and Jim and I had a conversation about this space, but I do not see our city clerk is...
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Day. I don't see that our city clerk is in a tenable position if we eliminate one of the jobs in that position. I've handed out significant material, some of it dated, showing the number of calls. The calls average 78 a day. The emails, four average, 170 a day. Record requests are two a day. The visitor directed copies, 1,000 a days. Meetings, you know, the meetings are beyond belief. There's 135 meetings in a year that someone has to cover. I strongly think that this position needs to be retained. You have a lot of material in front of you, and I, I, I just, I, I just don't see it as gonna function as well. The city council recently did something interesting, which I, Mrs. Vock has offered to ameliate a bit for me. But, you know, we're putting out a lot more emails, and so it means I have to check my city mail, email every day because we're putting out email. Well, I'm doing it. But what I'm suggesting to you is that what we're doing and not having this position is we're moving work to Mrs. Vock or each of us, rather than having it done by paid, somebody paid less than us and somebody that is dedicated to do it. And I don't think it's right. I would like to retain this position.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may make a suggestion. During the meetings last month, I brought up the concept, and I don't know if anything has been done on this yet, but that was of combining the city clerk's staff with the city manager's staff into the same area, and thereby having one additional administrative staff who is currently working full-time for the city manager to also assist with the other department, and thereby moving some of this requirements over to, to that person. And what, that would also help would be when Jim's assistant is on vacation, and she has been with us for a, a long period of time. So, she does have a accumulated, a very lengthy time period of vacation over the course of the year. And we're currently needing one of the city clerk's staff to assist him during those time periods. And with this concept of combining those two departments into one physical space, that could provide extra support to both offices.
Why don't we ask Mr. O'Connor whether his person, namely Joyce, would be able to pick up extra work to make this whole thing work? Now, let me make one other comment. I, I've had a conversation with Jim, and if, if we retain this position, which I badly want to do, there isn't room to move Jim down stairs. I think that's true. Be that as it may, I think we need the position, and that's with the understanding that we not move people around.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Well, I'm sorry, can we have Jim answer the first question?
Joyce obviously could cover a lot of the stuff in the office. The concern that we, I would have is I don't think she can take minutes. She doesn't have the skill set of taking minutes at various meetings that take place. There may be some office requirements that she could, she could handle, but, and obviously, she's adaptable to doing things if the cemetery records were part of that. I mean, obviously, could do some of that. But the total function of what the city clerk's office, I think, is, is sort of a unique type of job.
It's a unique standalone skill set.
That's correct.
And if I may just say, Ms. Hawkins is absolutely...
I'm sorry, um, did you have a comment?
Only the comment that also managing his schedule and, and doing the things that she does is, is pretty extensive as well, so...
Once again, Ms. Hawkins is absolutely delightful. I mean, she gives a terrific image for the city. She is always very pleasant, responsive, and everything else. But having sat in the city clerk's office for two years as vice mayor and mayor, with many, many hours of observing this operation, although we have a very lengthy list here, I certainly believe it can be efficiently handled with a staff of three. And you look at other cities, the average in their city clerk's offices, too. Granted, we have many boards, and I wish to support those, but I see no reason why these duties can't be shifted and be handled by the three-member staff we have.
Let's ask Mrs. Vock whether we can retain all of these commissions, or some of them, I'm not sure.
No, you may want to restrict how often that they meet on a quarterly basis, but still, it can, it can be handled.
Let's ask Mrs. Vock what kind of a hardship. Let's, it's her department.
You know, I agree that we do have a lot of commissioning boards, and I think I have mentioned to each one of you that if I do lose a position, that we are gonna have to look at some of these commissioning boards, maybe not eliminating them, but, you know, meeting on a quarterly basis. Some of them, I think that there may be other staff members that can handle doing the minutes for those boards. You know, it's, there is a hardship. There is a lot of boards that are meeting now, especially this time of the year. We have the union negotiations going on, and that takes someone from my office, you know, covering those, those minutes. We have PBA negotiations going on, and that's someone covering those minutes. The Recreation Commission has a couple of subcommittees that are meeting every other week, you know? So, there are more and more boards and commissions that we are having to cover.
Wayne, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is there a, with today's technology, is there a requirement that cities, municipalities, counties require written minutes? Or are tapes or videotapes allowed as a legal method to be used instead of actually having to transcribe or type up the minutes?
Transcription is required. Taking of minutes is required.
But certainly, some member of the committee could also step up. I mean, on these recreation subcommittees, we don't need a staff member there. You can have someone in the meeting, yeah, take notes, as well as for any of these other negotiations. I do not believe that you need, yeah, a full-time secretarial thing to handle a few meetings.
Is a staff member required to be at the meeting? Or can they do their transcription from the videotape or the, yeah, from a videotape?
Yeah. The law requires that on any public meeting, notice taking of minutes, and that would have to be live. The case law is clear, you can't substitute a live person taking minutes for a videotape or, or an audiotape.
But can the minutes be made from the videotape?
No. No, I don't believe so legally.
Have to have a live body present.
That's where I was going.
I agree with Mr. Winger. I think we need to retain that position.
Well, I just, just to make a comment, it would, it would be nice if, if we could have, you know, I, I mentioned the floating concept with the clerk's office. My real concern is with the legal. I really don't want attorneys answering phones and making copies and running that kind of stuff. If, you know, if Tammy could help them out a little bit. I know we're losing a position up there. We could capitalize on that savings if we could just share the, the duties between the clerk's office and the legal office.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll, I'll make a motion to that effect, that we retain this position with the understanding that Tammy's staff is responsible to help Wayne due to the shortfall that were inflicted upon him, which I am not trying to change.
What we can do also to supplement that, we will rely on planning to supplement our department, which we had done for a long time, but we can fall back to that, and we were right there, virtually in the same suite. So, if, if that works for Tammy.
That'll work. Yeah, I'll second that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Passes.
Would you vote, Mrs. Carroll?
I, I, yeah, I was voting aye. I'm sorry. I was silent, but I was just, I was still thinking about... So, off the table completely is the movement of your office downstairs.
Yes, ma'am, there's, be note, this place.
And Ms. Vock, you?
I do that with grave mis, I mean, but I, I really think it's the right decision. I mean, it is what it is.
But can we go on? Cindy, I mean, you're, I, I understand that we... I understand that we've got a, a, a number that we're, we're kind of overbalanced by. I mean, I mean, you're keeping a running tab to make sure we're...
She's got it right there.
Yes. Well, I want to, I just want to make sure we're...
Absolutely. When we get, when we get close to the 321, we will let you know.
That, that one, if you want numbers as we go, the actual cost to reinstate is about $43,000, but only $21,000 or so of that remains in the general fund because there is an admin allocation of clerk's costs out to the other funds. So, right now, you are started at 313, and you're down by about $21,000.
Anyone on the city manager have anything?
We should have something. We couldn't let him off that easy. Lee?
We, he's got a full table in our city hall. And then to city attorney's office. Wayne, you and Tammy are gonna have to work out something, who comes up and covers for you, okay?
Well, if you, if I may, Mr. Mayor, say just a couple of words. As was said about someone in the, in the clerk's office, I think it's even more so in my office where there's a specific skill set that a paralegal has. I was a good soldier, and, and as requested, Carol Giraud did offer to retire this coming January, which was, without replacing her, we were able to reduce the budget. The problem is that when we lose her, there are many things that regardless will come to the attorneys instead. Often, a paralegal can answer the phone, answer a question, actually go ahead and do the work for something for a department, and then pass it on the attorney for approval. That's not gonna happen with somebody from the clerk's office filling in here and there. from the clerk's office filling in here and there. Carol is willing to stay another year, so that was her preference in the first place. But also, as Jim had mentioned, I think in our last workshop, even though the plan is to go to a fully insured liability coverage on the insurance, where the insurance company will provide a defense on liability claims, currently, if you remember my memo regarding goals and also the outstanding claims, we are having to use outside counsel for defense already because we already lost one full attorney. There is a lot of coordination between that outside counsel and my office for the city. A lot of legwork is done for them, a lot of filings, you name it. We have been doing it for them. We would have no choice but to tell the outside counsel they're pretty much going to be on their own. We can direct them to the proper department, what have you. But without having the personnel that's trained and experienced in helping with those legacy claims that will continue on for some time, plus remember, any new insurance would only come into effect for an incident or accident that happens after October 1st. So we still have quite a list of claims outstanding. We still have potential going forward. If it happens on the, at the end of September, they have four years to bring the claim. So it just, I mean, we will manage the best we can, and it will certainly raise the cost for outside counsel, and it will certainly not affect what we do for the counsel, because that is always our priority, to take care of counsel's wishes and needs first. And of course, anything had to do with the litigation, which we would put to the side, and it would have to go to the outside counsel, and they would have to do the best they could. But the ones that will be affected, all these people in the back here, all these different departments, they will definitely be affected on the services they receive in a timely manner. And it will slow down the work that they get turned around from the, from the office. So I just want to make sure that there's the understanding that that will happen.
However, during the last year, we've had fifteen claims that have came in, that have been reviewed as litigation and litigation support.
Well, those are, that's ongoing things. I mean, that's continuous.
But that's not these, I'm looking at the documentation provided, and a lot of these claims that came in, and they're just simply, a letter has been received. Somebody fell, and no suit's been filed. So I can't imagine that a lot of these, they're just, you file the letter, you...
Well, we were...
You're not continually calling them to see if they're going to sue.
No, 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 no. But there are many open cases, we filed litigation, that we're helping outside counsel with. Everything from employment law issues to liability claims for an accident. We assist the outside counsel and save the city money that way. It's not a problem. I mean, we're going to tell them, because Catherine McKenzie, who is our paralegal that deals with litigation mostly, Carol does too, but Catherine's duties are going to have to be transferred over to what Carol, what Carol does is all my administrative stuff. Everything from scheduling to, and Catherine, they both do some of this, but Carol does much more of scheduling, and they each do different types of documents for us. But it's all going to have to be consolidated to Catherine and like, on my budget. Carol does my budget for me. Catherine will need to learn to do that. It's just, we've already taken three attorneys, and we've got two attorneys now doing the work of three.
I'd just like to say with that county is a hundred and thirty thousand people, a much larger geographical area, and they get by with two attorneys.
No, ma'am, they have three, and three support people.
I was told they had two.
Well, they're looking for the third because the one left because of maternity leave.
Wayne, was there?
Was there a possibility, or just come in part-time? Well, we, of course, we have a rule that says that you can't come back for more than sixty days if you retire. And I don't, honestly, I don't know if she'd come back part-time.
Okay.
And I, you know, I just don't know how much that would help us.
Any other comments on City Attorney's Office?
I make a motion, though you have no change for that. Well, I don't know if there needs to be a motion, but...
No, I don't need a motion, but I agree.
Can always come back. We've got more meetings.
We can always revisit it. Human resources. Anyone have anything on human resources? To the Finance Administration.
I had one, but it's, you know, ten thousand dollars. I forget it.
Well, that's what we're here for. If you want to go ahead, go ahead.
I actually had an answer.
Your questions were dispersed to the...
Well, no, no, I meant for them to do. You do what you think's right. Let's move on.
And absolutely, and there will be a change there. So you'll see that next time.
Thank you.
You guys want to let the rest of the council in on what you're talking about?
We had a budget number for printing and binding that we failed to update when we entered into a new copier contract this last year that saved us about thirty-eight hundred dollars. We've also gotten really cheap with copies and have been trying really hard to do electronic documents. So as a result, I think we can lower that number. However, I'm going to put a little bit of it back to some computers, because we just realized this morning, as it took forever to load up, that Javier's computer is ten years old, and mine is eight. And so we're going to maybe look at least replacing his, so it goes a little faster.
At least for the Finance Department, yes. I think if we're going to invest in computers anywhere within the city, please, this is a priority.
So we had five minutes to get a document. It took eight minutes to start up. So, so anyway, we'll shift a little bit of that around, but there will be a net savings there too, I think.
Thank you.
Information Technology, page twenty-five.
I don't have anything to Public Works, if anybody has anything before that. On page forty-one.
Well, I've got police. When we get that far.
All right, okay.
Finance, anything on finance? Planning and Development. Mr. Winger on police?
Well, I would make a motion to retain the position. I think we have to stay away from personalities. But I think this position is needed. I think it's needed for the wild animals and the protection that we get for that. I don't know if anyone remembers, but rabies is, what is it, a fourteen or twenty-eight day daily shot and almost kills you. We had a rabid coon when I lived on Conway. I mean, for what it's worth. I live in a place right now where the varmints swim across the water to my house, which is entertaining. Well, I only live from one of the spoil, oh, not a spoil island, it's actually, no, a natural island. And I just, and then, of course, I like animals, all animals, and I hate to see an animal suffer. And I just, I'll make a motion that we retain this position. I think it's necessary.
All in favor? Under discussion?
Jim, I have a concern, and that is that the position is assisting the county at times during the time period that we're paying for them, and that is unreimbursed. I really know in the past, we have tried to do that. We've, for those who didn't hear that, we had a comment from the background that said, "Let's bill them." We've tried that, and it hasn't went over too well. However, in this specific, I think there's a distinction here, that this is a life-saving service provided by a city employee for residents of the county. And I would suggest that we look towards some methodology for billing or charging that service back.
Or excluding him. Very distinct information. You need to go to him to instructions that he is not to go into the county.
I hate to say that if there's a life-saving, you know...
There's a couple of issues here. One is that we do have mutual aid with the Sheriff's Department, and so it's sort of all-encompassing, but...
In other words, you're saying that there are times when they come into the city to help, do not, but they do not send us a bill?
Yes, ma'am. That is true. It's one of those type of agreements. Taking that out of the context as well, a lot of times, we're responding not necessarily to the county, but we're responding to an agency that's a not-for-profit that happens to be located in the county that has an injured animal, because we're the only ones that will do that in support of those agencies. Now, I think if we made a policy that I'm going to send Joe Baird a bill for responding at the call of either the Sheriff's Department or the animal control of the county, what they would do is they would just go through the nonprofits. If we don't want to respond to them, again, that's more than likely going to be in some of the unincorporated areas, then we could put that, and we could come out with a pricing mechanism if that's what we want to do. It's just a little more complicated.
Just for the record, we have an agreement dated September 12th, 2006, with the county about how we work with them, for what it's worth.
Yeah, I think that's the mutual aid agreement, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not familiar with that document.
And I haven't personally seen that document either, so, but I just presume, because I do know that we do have a mutual aid agreement.
Yeah, but on animal control, the people who are obese pay twice.
That is correct. Yeah, there's no question about that. And we do, it is a supplemental support of what we do. But we can change, a mutual aid agreement's only as good as the paper that's written on you. What you do is you change the agreement and write for...
I will say, we've had, yeah, very touched with the stories that we've heard today in the background and the service that we have received from this animal control officer. My main concern, once again, is that we are paying the county for a service, and we're letting them off the hook. We are all city residents, are county residents, you know? We pay our county taxes to provide this service, and instead of holding their feet to the fire to provide adequate service for our citizens, we said, "Oh, no, we're going to push back that cost some more in our city."
I'd have to agree with that.
Well, we have a motion in a second on the floor. All in favor of retaining the officer?
Aye.
For?
Opposed.
One.
I've got one thing on the, on the police, and that is...
Get your mic.
I'm sorry, I'm having to share here. And that is, is a support person for the police department, because we've got an awful lot of police officers who are doing administrative work instead of out there policing. I mean, you just don't see the patrol cars out in the street. Well, at least they're, they're not writing tickets, I can, I can tell you that. But we're looking at, you know, we had sixty-two officers, we went down to fifty-two, and now I'm told that we've got officers that left, and now we're down to forty-eight.
No, sir, we are, we are looking for filling all those positions, so any vacancy up to the fifty-two. Let's clarify that sixty-two number, and that's very important. Historically speaking, before I got here, there was a concept that somebody adopted that you could put positions in your department, and they would be unbudgeted. Those were not filled positions. They were in the, in a plan somewhere that if the city happened to get a windfall, then those positions, but they were not funded positions. When people talk about cutting ten positions, that is correct. I eliminated those because they were never funded, they were never budgeted, and never filled. So we took those out of there. So there's not a ten-member reduction. We do have one position, an officer Kelly who left on his own accord and retired. We have asked the chief to hold off on that position for, up until October the first, in order to pay that separation cost, i.e. the expenses. But that position will be filled October the first.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here, I've talked to an awful lot of the officers, and they're having to do an awful lot of their own clerical work.
That is, that's...
You know, we're cutting four positions, you know, I, on the police side of things, you know, you cut pretty gingerly, because if you make a mistake in cutting too far in the police, the public pays pretty dearly for that. You know, it's like the lifeguards out there, you know? If the guy's not out there when you have a shark attack, bad things really happen. I'd like to add one more person back in there on the support, and I'd be happy with just having the two cut on the administrative positions, but I'd like to have that one person put back in there to make sure our officers spend more time out on the road.
I will second that. And, you know, what concerns me, and I, the day we were considering this, I had the same thought. You know, to have police officers do clerical work, there's been a couple of cases recently where David Curry answered the phone himself, for what it's worth. I mean, you're getting to that. I don't think we should define, if we're able to get one person back, what that person does. I think that should be for the city manager and Mr. Chief Curry to do, but I would second the motion to retain one more person.
Good discussion, Mayor. Once again, I object to add, to even considering adding some back without having some statistical or information. I mean, Chief Curry came to us, this was one, a cut that he was, you know, willing to make if it was going to jeopardize public safety and cause a disaster. Surely, he would not have offered this. So I think it's a gross exaggeration.
Well, I agree. Chief Curry came up with this one, and he's, he knows how to run his office.
Okay, the premise that, you know, I don't want to throw off on the department directors and get them in a position where you think they enjoy cutting these positions. That's not accurate.
No one ever enjoys cutting. It's a very, very difficult thing to do, but if pose a public safety, surely this would have been brought forward.
That is correct. And there's no, the CSI position is another one of those. But the role that they played was, is I had to impose so many positions in order to get to a balanced budget, and that's what they did. And as you all saw preliminarily, we sent out the information to you as to what impacts this would have, what are the value added, what are the core services. And I think the chief did this, as well as in other departments, where we try to minimize the impact on, on the public service. Mayor makes a suggestion. I, if it's acceptable to council, I would make a motion to table the motion on the floor, with the understanding that at the first available opportunity that Chief Curry bring forward, either justification or lack of justification to satisfy Mrs. Turner's concerns. So I'll make that motion to table.
Okay, we're going to table that motion. Mark, do you have a comment?
You need to vote on that motion to table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passage in and out, please. Mark?
Mark Mutcher. I'm, as usually, I'm a little confused, and I'm sure there's a good explanation, but you're cutting five people from the police, and yet your personnel expenses are going down a total of thirty-two thousand dollars? Does that have to do with the...
Four people are being cut only.
Oh, four, okay, that's right.
And maybe other, yeah.
Four, four for thirty-two dollars, or eight thousand dollars apiece. Does that have to do, is that offset by the people making over seventy getting an increase, or how's that work?
Partially that, but last year's adopted budget was also the budget that we adopted before we completed our union negotiations. So it was kind of in a different place, too, in terms of what was in overtime versus what was in salaries. Last year's adopted budget reflected our proposal to do rank reductions, and they didn't actually take place. So that, that would actually bring the number from what people really are feet on the ground making right now versus what we're budgeting for next year to a much higher cut.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the police?
So the direction is from council that I would have Chief Curry give us, and he would give us some type of written response into support of one of the positions.
I think he'd give a written respo, a support, but I think he should also come forward, and then it depends upon what he says. I mean, there you go.
Have a conversation with chief and ask him to do a formal presentation.
We'll do that.
Public Works Engineering Survey on page thirty-nine.
No, but I do have a question on page forty-one and streets. It looks like we have, we've made an additional reduction.
Yes, ma'am.
Personnel in streets, and yet it looks like we put them back into, we moved them to ground maintenance?
That is correct. We did, because our ground maintenance is where we needed to shore up.
To, to a net benefit on the salaries, too, because the one we eliminated in streets was a higher-paid position than the one that came back.
Is that the same employee that you're moving, or is it a...
No, we had a...
Qualifications and a new employee from that specific department?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on page forty-five, if you'll bear with me. Mrs. Turner, you'd be glad to know I'm not trying to add any people back.
You're right. I am glad to hear that.
However, I do want to add fifty thousand dollars back. What we did is, we, we had our areas for the general public that are not irrigated, which would be a lot like along A1A, Piece of Pie Park, Jacoby Park, the airport grounds, there are a great many of them around the city. We hired a contractor, and we put it out for a bid. We got one bid of forty-nine, one of sixty, and a couple of around a hundred. We were, with two people, it was costing us something over a hundred thousand dollars. Jim can fill in the accurate numbers.
One twenty-three.
One twenty-three. So what's happened is, and I've done this twice now, I've sent photos around to everyone, but what's happening is, we, this, the contractor for forty-nine thousand dollars isn't getting the job done. The reason he's not getting the job done is it took us two people to do it. He's now had to bring two people in, and I don't think, I think we know enough now for the budgeting process to say that we should budget for two people, which is, in round terms, a hundred thousand. If Jim is able to do it for forty-nine thousand, or sixty thousand, or a hundred thousand, inside or out, that's not my concern. But I believe we're under budgeting for grass. And I, I think these parks, I don't know anyone saw the picture of the little boy with grass up over his waist, or my feet, I can't see my feet in the park. Yesterday, if you look...
his waist, or my feet, I can't see my feet in the park. Yesterday, if you looked at the grass at the corner of Indian River Boulevard and 17th, this contractor left grass all over out on the street, which is certainly not good for the lagoon. It can't be done with one person. And so therefore, the 49,000 isn't going to fly. Maybe it will for 60, I don't know. But I think, being conservative, we should budget 100. If Jim can do it for 49, if he can do it inside, outside, I don't care. But I don't think he's got enough money.
I'm concerned, here we are, we're not getting started with an outside contractor. Staff, we're having management problems with it, and because of that, we're going to throw another 50 grand at it. Two yard bend on a contract basis without having to pay for all the heavy insurance and pension contributions and benefits should not cost us $100,000.
And also, we are in the middle of one of the highest rain volumes we've seen in many, many, many years. As we all know, I mean, it seemed like it rained every single afternoon. I've got our water sewer department staff out there shaking their head, yes, yes. We've had a lot of rain, and the grass is growing like crazy. Some of you guys play golf.
Look at your own backyard. Look at your own backyard.
The golf courses are saying they're cutting every day or two. So I think that two things happen simultaneously. We have the new service come in, getting used to everything, and we had significant rain. I think we should go forward with what we have now and give a few months as we start into the dry season and see if we do continue having these problems.
I think you demand performance by the contractor and deformance by the staff to management.
I think we even need to give them a little more time to work out the problems also.
Keep in mind, irregardless of the rain situation, I mean, blowing grass out in the street is a mark of professionalism.
That's true.
Cutting grass and leaving it, and not cutting at all, and leaving pieces, that's professionalism. Whether it rains a lot or it doesn't rain a lot, it's still going to be that way.
It's a matter of contract requirement, very simply.
And Monty, can you...
You put it in the contract, this is what's done. This is to be mowed.
How much time you want to give them? How much time you want to give them?
It's how it's being managed. It's a lack of management.
I have a question for Monty, and that is, I know when our own city staff was cutting the lawns and the medians, we were following that later the day with the street sweeper. Is that occurring with our contract guys?
Monty Falls, Director of Public Works. We are still working with this contractor to get him to come into conformance with the contract that was written. And it was written specifically to mimic exactly the services we provide. Now, I understand if you drive by a median that was mowed, at that instant, you may see some grass that was in the road. If you would have come back an hour later, it was gone. Where the medians get narrow, they can't, when they make those last couple passes, there's some grass going to get in the road. If you see it at that instant, it's there. We had this discussion with the contractor yesterday, and it was cleaned up before he left. I will tell you that the performance of this contractor has not met what we put in the spec. We've had many conversations with him. We have put in about 15% of the grounds maintenance manager's time, which was less than 1% when we were doing in-house managing this contract. It's been a struggle. I was in contact with the contractor late yesterday evening, and I told him that the window for him to come into conformance was closing quickly. I told him he needed to find a way to do what we put in the spec, or if he couldn't do it, to let me know. It was a business decision, it was nothing personal. I got some information back from him this morning, that he is going to have additional manpower and resources here on this job Monday. And my recommendation is to give him till the end of this month with those additional resources to execute this contract. In his defense, when we bid the contract, it was bid for a start date of October 1st, as the growing season has slowed down. It would have given him some time to learn the sites, and there are about 100 of them, to have his workers learn the routes.
Yeah, and to throw them in at peak time right now.
When the critical growing was not happening. We asked him to start because of the ability to save some money. We have saved some money, but we have had a lot less service. I've seen the pictures that Councilmember Winger took, and it's not satisfactory. The contractor knows that, we know that, and if it doesn't get better by October 1st, I'll be making a recommendation to Mr. O'Connor that we do something different. And I've taken a look at the bids that we got. We got five bids. Mr. Winger's correct, around 50,000 for the 149-2. The next low bidder was 63, the next bidder was 90. The final two bidders were substantially higher than what we do at 400 house. So I was comfortable that our costs were reasonable. We had two low bids. Obviously, the first one hadn't worked. So we're hopeful. I'm hopeful that this contractor will be able to perform as specified in the contract, and we'll be able to continue to save that 50 to 60,000. So that's my recommendation.
Will the bids still be within their length of viability if we wait another month? Or do we have to rebid?
We have spoken with the second low bidder, and he is willing to move in if we need him.
And we have based the budget from you on the current utilization?
That's correct.
And the next bid was another $10,000 more?
Uh, 40.
I would recommend we add $15,000 to this line item in case we do need to go up to the second bid, or add slightly to the specs in order to get the level of service.
I see this is a contract management problem. That's all it is, really. The city manager needs to either make it work with these people we have, or come back to us later with a request for an increase if he can't do it.
Yeah, I agree. Then I withdraw that if there's not going to be a second.
We can do that. Also, in sort of in defense a little bit if needed, in Monty's estimation, when we did the bids and they came back, and the numbers came back like they did, he was still recommending to me that we wait till October. I was the one that got greedy when you see a difference between 49 and 123. We do know that it's at the peak of the time, and it was a challenge. But Nanette's doing a great job of working with the contractor in between she and Monty. I really believe we'll suffer for the first couple of months, but based on the most recent conversations, the guy will try to make it work. If he can't, the second low bid is ready to go to work, and they have the minimum of two people, and I think they've had at least the knowledge of the experience that has taken place. And that will be an adjustment. We will either do that at mid-year or whenever that would be necessary.
Little training program.
You forgot just how much rain we got during the summer while you were up in Virginia. Is that what happened?
Well, I did, but it was one of those things you just sort of get greedy, and it was...
Were any of the bidders local? I mean, were they all from out of town, or...
The company that got the low bid is from Winter Park. They have indicated they're going to be opening a local office September 1st. The second low bidder has a local office. Their corporate headquarters is not in Indian River County, but they have a local office.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Monty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record again, Kandig, 1846 21st Avenue. As I stated before, at the beginning of the meeting, I took Councilman Winger around and our city manager around to show the areas of concern. We've had wet seasons before, and the grass has gotten high. And on an as-needed basis, on these non-irrigated areas, you could call the city, and the city could come out and do their job. Right now, since this contractor's taken over, it's been very shoddy work. And I'm in business myself. When you do a contract, you come in and do your job according to the specs. If you don't do it according to the specs, you're dismissed. You know, I don't hear this wet season, you know, oh, well, so sad, too bad. It was brought to your attention here just a few moments ago by your Public Works Director. The city has done it. They do it at fair market value compared to some of the other contractors. Right now, the way the care is being done in our, on some of our mainland neighborhood areas, Piece of Pie Park for one, Jacobi Park for another, it's having an adverse effect on the neighborhood. I don't think it's fair that you have a park and you let it get overgrown, and the overgrown grass, and I'll use Jacobi for one example, there were cement blocks in the field, there was the pieces of wood in the field, and kids have to play in this. The other thing that our parks people used to do is if the playground equipment needed repaired or broken down or whatever, they would notify the appropriate department head and let them know. That cannot take place. Also, example, we're in the wet season right now. If the grass is too high, you can call the city and have them come out and mow it and take care of the situation. You have to wait in line for the out-of-town contractor to come in and do it. Also, in Piece of Pie Park and Jacobi, when the grass was high, the grass was cut, it was blown off the road, but it was blown into the park where the big piles of grass were laying real high, and the kids had to wade through that to play at the park. That's just not right. We didn't do this in the past, and I would ask your consideration to keep an open mind on this. If you have to budget more money to either use your subcontractor or tighten up your specs, that you would please do that, because what's happening right now, and it's been happening for the last number of months, it's having an adverse effect on our mainland neighborhoods of these parks that I'm mentioning. There's other grass areas that I don't want to, you know, take up your time with this, other mediums that they used to take care of, that they're not taking care of in these mainland neighborhoods, and even on the island side. And it makes the neighborhoods look shoddy. We were not doing this type of thing a number of months ago, or a few years ago. It looks really bad out there. And if some of you don't believe me at this table, each one of you, separate, I will take you out and show you. It's hurting us, and that's the point I want to make. So please keep an open mind on this. If we need to budget more money, please do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dig.
I have a question. Mr. Falls, if you don't mind. The member of the public mentioned that there was a lot of grass laying on the fields of the park. We don't currently bag the grass that comes off of the parks and the, when the mowers come through, is that correct?
That's correct.
We didn't do it before, and the new contractor doesn't either.
And the reason, when it got in the condition it did, there's nothing that could happen other than to have the piles. As the frequency increases, and we have spoken to the contractor on these park areas, the high public use areas, that they've got to be done this time of year at least once every two weeks. That's what he has sent us in his recent email, that he would have the manpower to do that, and pick up the frequency on all the areas during the heavy growing season. So after a couple cycles, as we increase this mowing, you're going to have less volume that's mowed each time, and that situation should be acceptable at that point.
And that grass is just going to decompose and create like a fertilizer back for the saw that's there as it is? Okay.
Compost. Anything else? Let's move to 47, Public Works Admin. 49, Fleet Management. 53, Public Works Facilities Management. Does anybody have anything on general fund construction?
General Fund on the departmental there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. We talked about this, and I am at sea about where we ended up. But the dune restoration, you know, $30,000 this particular year, and then we talked about, well, maybe we needed to build a fund or have a reserve. Well, $30,000 is unlikely to, I mean, maybe we'll be lucky, but it doesn't seem like enough money, or it doesn't seem like we have a plan in place. That's all I'm saying.
I think I took an action at that last meeting to go back and, you know, have a look at some of the history and kind of see what our average has been. If you look at our average across 13 years, the last 13 years since like 2000, it's been about $28,000 a year average. If you go to the 10-year mark, it's about $36,000, and if you look at the last five years, it's a little closer to 60. So certainly, you know, what I'm seeing in the last few years is a little bit more frequency of situations that even if they're not hurricanes, are doing pretty massive damage. You know, we could tackle it a couple of different ways. We can increase that number a little bit. We can carve out a portion of the fund balance we talked about earlier and just set it aside for that and appropriate it by budget amendment if we need it each year, and then replenish it from time to time. You know, I'm sort of looking to you for direction. You know, certainly within the last two years that it's happened to us, we've had enough wherewithal in the rest of the budget to handle it through a budget amendment without a major impact. But I agree, there might be a better way to do this over the long haul.
Well, I like your second suggestion, the one you just said, which you might talk about a little bit more.
Actually, make a designated portion of the fund balance for this and appropriate it as we need it.
And then replenish it, whether it's 30,000, 50,000, or whatever, so that, you know...
Council comments?
I'm getting a problem doing that.
You know, I mean, dune restoration, I mean, it's kind of gamble, have self-insurance type of thing. You know, hopefully, once you get it funded, then it, you know, you don't fund it until you need to again.
Right. And the preceding, the preceding year, you would be able to restore your fund balance in the budgeting process.
But my assumption is that the money wouldn't be tagged, so that if you needed it elsewhere, you could move it elsewhere. For example, if the boardwalk needed to be redone or something like that.
We, if we formally designate it as reserved fund balance, then it would have to be released by you to that purpose, or you'd have to modify the resolution that designates it. But, you know, kind of what we've been doing is in the nature of that, because every year we budget 30,000, if we spend it more than that, you know, we have to amend the budget to handle it. If we spend none of that, we amend the budget to put extra into fund balance. So it really kind of depends on two things. How formal do you want that to be? Do you want to retain your flexibility, or do you want to formalize that set aside? And two, what do you think's an appropriate amount, given these numbers that range from a 13-year history of 30 grand a year to a five-year history of closer to 60?
I would think probably for an average number, we should look at increasing this. But I object to setting up a separate fund. I think, once again, we continue to utilize, you know, our reserve and monitor it on an annual basis. But I would suggest increasing this 30K or to 45, or closer to 60 to the five-year average.
I'll second that on a 45.
I would also suggest that we not create a set aside for this. We all are under the understanding that our current county government is disopposed to sharing any of the funds that they have for beach re-nourishment with the city for our dune restoration on an emergency basis. However, there will be a change in county government in the next few years, as the county administrator is currently in the draw-up program. And there may be a change in belief at that time period, and a portion that has been set aside could affect future requests from that fund.
You know, in general, part of the reason that, particularly in Florida, that you have good, healthy fund balances, like we talked about in the general fund, is hurricanes and weather and things you don't expect. So certainly, with our fund balance, our undesignated fund balance at the level that it's at, even the worst year of expenditures, which is the one we're in at 161,000, is, our fund balance is more than adequate to handle that and to just deal with it on a year-to-year basis, and budget something reasonable, like 45,000 or 50,000, that will just, you know, put back into fund balance each year if we don't spend it.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard the motion for 45K.
Yes, in a second.
In a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So it's a $15,000 adjustment.
Yes. General Fund Construction. Electric Fund Operating Budget.
My concern with the electric fund, I'd like to spend a few minutes on that and just kind of work our way through. If you'll remember, in the general session, we were dealing with a full-year budget for the city, but a half-year budget for electric, and maybe I was negligent. But I didn't spend the time on it to understand it that I would otherwise like. So, you know, I think, I think we should spend a half hour or 45 minutes on it, frankly, Mr. Mayor. I have specific items, but I probably have eight or nine working our way through.
Well, go right ahead. Start us off.
Well, okay, on page 63 on the revenue. For what it's worth, the year-to-date revenue for nine months is 64 million dollars off the, coming out of the, coming out of the general ledger. So that would say that, and certainly the summer month isn't going to be lighter, I wouldn't think. I mean, you know, we have two heavy seasons, December and August, sort of, and September. So that would say that the 91,854,500 is probably a little light. I don't know what the right number is. But that would, if you just take the number in the 64 and move it forward, it's 96. But I would say the last year's budget, if you want to be conservative, is closer than, unless you can explain to me why we're reducing the revenue, because it doesn't look like it's driven by numbers.
Actually, the numbers that drive that revenue estimate for next year are the numbers that we had in our most recent utility rate sufficiency forecast that we presented, you know, to the Utility Commission and the Finance Commission. You know, as we talked about last year, budgeting is one thing, but, you know, in this enterprise fund, what we've started to focus in on, at least on a quarterly basis, is are we covering our expenses? So this is with actual revenues, and then about three months' worth of projections in this utility rate sufficiency through July. in this utility rate sufficiency through July the 15th. So, for instance, our residential estimate for this year, projection for this year right now sits at 45,800, and so we made the next year budget 46,000. Our commercial projection sits at 41,700, so we went with 42, and so on and so forth. So that's actually the basis for those numbers.
Yeah, and so you and I are looking at apples and oranges, because I'm looking at more newer information than you are, and we can probably accept the older information if that's the case. But what is the date of, when was that done, that particular document?
This utility rate sufficiency includes actuals up through month-end June.
How far, June?
Month-end June.
Now, most of any increase, I mean, you could adjust the number to wherever you want to, but it's going to be readjusted by your operating expenses, your purchased power and that kind of stuff, so it sort of balances itself out. I mean, our markup is not so great. That's correct. That's correct.
And actually, for the purchased power costs that you see in this budget as well, which is the other main component, again, what I've used is our utility rate sufficiency that we updated as of July the 15th through the month-end June. So, you know, this is the best information we have about 11, 12 right now. I'm sorry, 12, 13. I mean, three years at the same time.
I guess my underlying point, so you understand where I'm going, is I think the profitability of this thing is better, and I can live with that than is in this budget. But if you go to page 72 for the fun of it, which is the fuel and purchased power, which is the lion's share of what the cost is, the other things we'll deal with, I've got some other questions about the plant and so on. But, you know, we have a budget, fuel purchase cost, a budget of 59 million. Year-to-date through June, it's 37 million, saying that our costs will be more like 50 million rather than 59, and when you look at the revenue, in other words, what I'm saying is, if you, if you go back to page 63 and you look at surplus revenue of 8, 9, 4, 8, I'll state it. I'll state it the way I want to state it. I'll state it and say, I think that's conservative. I think we'll do considerably better than that. Now, if we want to use those numbers, that's fine.
Keeping in mind, though, and this is, this is a critical point, the year-to-date purchased power costs in that general ledger are one month behind.
Okay.
So those do not rep, because we pay, in November, we pay for October. In December, we pay for November. So at the nine-month point, that represents only eight months of expenditures.
So if I added 50% to it, it's 18, it would be 55 instead of 59. Again, the point remains the same. I...
And again, the 59 comes from the rate, utility rate sufficiency analysis, because this includes the actuals where our costs have gone up in the summer because of the usage. So, you know, we, and again, it's completely up to you guys, it's a policy decision, but at this point, this is the best information we have about how 11, 12 will end up.
Let me ask the question, how often do we do the rate sufficiency?
We've actually been updating it on a monthly basis. We took it to, I think, to you in March, and again, to the Utility Commission in, here at their most recent meeting in July.
So, I mean, it's an ongoing adjustment, but we have to settle on a budget number somehow.
It is, yes. Again, I'm not trying to change it. I'm just suggesting to you that I believe that the prior year budget of 11, 5, 4, 0 is probably closer to where we're going to be. I'm not trying to adjust it, I'm just making that...
Make it a point. I understand.
That's all.
You have anything else on...
I would have probably several things.
Now is the time.
If you go to page 74, I'm going to work my way through Electrical, page by page, and when I skip something, if somebody else wants to come back, I didn't have any questions of my own.
Got you.
And again, as I say, I had not really analyzed Electrical to the degree I did the rest of the city. But if you go to page 74, Printing and Binding, we have a $100,000 budget. We spent $73,000 last year, and we spent 55 this year. Just looks like a high number. And that's all I'm saying. I, I gave you the courtesy, or it's not a courtesy, it's my job, on these other departments to highlight things that looked a little high. I'm not asking for you to answer it here, I'm asking you just to look at it. That's all.
TND?
Okay, TND, which is on page 76. If you look at Professional Services, the first line under operating expense, we have a budget of 50,000. We spent 28,000, 29,000 the year before. We've spent zero year-to-date. Again, I'm just asking, I'm not asking you to comment. Highlight it and come back to it. Well, since we're only highlighting, and I'm not taking the public's time, machine equipment rental, you've spent nothing for what it's worth. Software maintenance, which I, I'm sure there's a great explanation for it, but you spent 59,000 the year before, you have a budget of 80, you spent 47. So, you know, it looks like it's, it's, it looks like it should be at least questioned. That's all I'm doing. Schools and meetings, which are on page 77, prior year, you spent 37,000. You have a budget of 40. So far, year-to-date, you spent 3. And maybe there's a school or meeting at the last of the year, I don't know. Station equipment rental, about halfway down page 77. Boy, that one is really asymmetrical. The year before, it was 113. You got a budget of 15, but you spent 13. I don't know.
What is that line on?
I'm sorry, I lost it.
It's 3, 5, 2, 0, 2, 6 is the...
On what page? I'm sorry, I got...
I'm on 77. Station equipment rental.
Station equipment?
About halfway down.
You know, I mean, it's either high or low or something. I don't know. That gets that department.
Is that station material distribution? Is that what you were...
Yeah.
Station material?
Slow me down if I go in... Station equipment distribution. It's about halfway down the page. It's 50,000.
Got you.
The numbers look crazy. 13, 15, 1, 15. I mean, I don't know. You tell me. If you're ready, Mr. Mayor, to move on to the next page, page 78. Halfway down the page, schools and meetings, you spent 2,000 the prior year. You got a budget of 15. You spent 10. I just wonder about schools and meetings for TND. That's all. I mean, it's a question.
A lot of that is for like the NRT preparedness and then for the different ratings that our linemen have and that kind of stuff.
Okay. All I ask is you highlight it, and you can come back with a written, you know. And if you, if you see there's a question, then you'll, I'm sure you'll make adjustments. Office equipment, down a little bit, small one. You spent zero, you got 8,000. You know, selling this thing, I'm not really too interested in buying equipment for it. If you go to page 79, which is electrical metering, vehicle maintenance, you spent $9,000 one year, $8,000 budget. You spent 7,000 year-to-date, you're up to 15,000. It looks like it's a little high.
And those are actually the amount allocated out to the various departments from the Fleet Management, so that's a journal entry that I'm not sure we do it monthly or quarterly, but we can have another look.
Yeah, whatever. Again, I'm not, I'm not, most of these, I'm just highlighting for you. I would have normally done that during the earlier session. I didn't, so...
If there's an easy, if there's an easy answer, though, I'd love to tackle it if we can now just...
Re-allocation?
Yeah. Throughout all of Fleet Management? Vehicle maintenance, we start collecting.
Go to true costs.
All of Fleet Management.
There's a full cost allocation, so they're all from what they...
All I'm doing is looking at asymmetrical numbers. I'm looking at prior year, I'm looking at year-to-date, and I'm looking at a budget, and if they don't look like they're reasonable, I say, well, you know, tell me about it.
See peaks or...
Okay, if you go to page 82, this one may be worth some discussion. But Professional Services, you have a budget, this is, I think, by and large, the cost of the legal expenses for the sale of the electric, which we all know is expensive. You have a budget of 1, 0, 5, 5. I'd question whether that's high enough for next year. But so far, year-to-date, and of course, we're two months behind, but in June, I think the most recent bill that's in here is May, is 6, 35. And I opened this discussion, but I'm not sure 1, 0, 5, 5 is a high enough number for the year if we're going to get this thing sold.
And actually, what I had done is an analysis of the actuals in that line item, including the last seven months' average billings from Edwards-Wildman, the last couple of quarterlies from Nixon Peabody, some of the other one-time costs that are in there, like we spent, for instance, this year in that line item, about $36,000 on the referendum and on the survey, and those won't happen again. And took those averages and then played them out across the full year to come up with the 1, 0, 5, 5. So, you know, of that, I have...
That's as good, that's as good a forecast as any.
Based on about a seven-month average.
Jay, are you happy with that? Okay, I mean, again, I think it's, at least us bringing it up and having considered it is a worthwhile exercise. I think it's going to be a low number, but we'll see. Okay, halfway down the page, on page 82, meter deposit interest. 2,000 is the expenditure the year before was 26, and you got a budget of 50. So, I mean, the numbers are asymmetrical again.
That's a once-a-year thing, when we take the deposit that you have on file with us and pay you back once a year on your bill interest on the deposit that we're holding, so it's not really a pro-rata thing. I think there's a one month where they all hit.
Why don't you take a, take a look at it, because the 2 versus 50 versus 26 is unusual.
Yeah.
Other contractual services, almost towards the bottom, 35,000. You spent zero, you spent zero last year, zero year-to-date, 35,000, and Randall may have a specific expense in that, I don't know.
That is the, what used to be the FMEA membership that we did away with, and so what we placed in instead was a $35,000 placeholder in case we need mutual aid that we're not now getting through that membership. You know, certainly, that's another one of those things we can, but we changed the name of it, and it's no longer a once-a-year payment to FMEA for the membership, but instead a placeholder in case we need the mutual aid.
That's what we agreed to.
Either way.
That's perfectly acceptable, and when you make your comments, just come back with that. I frankly had forgotten that, so Ms. Turner, thank you for reminding me. The miscellaneous, just below it, 2, 24, 4. Last year, you spent 10. So far, you spent 3,000 year-to-date. It just, again, they're asymmetrical numbers. I don't know the other expenses, the transfer to Electrical, R and R will get in. Are, Mr. Mayor, are we going to look at the capital, or, because that's where that comes from?
Yeah, we can. I mean, it's, it's open...
We need to.
It's an open page, whatever.
Well, let's not do it at this point, unless Jay wants to.
I just have one, one thing. Are we just, are we, are you planning on just maintaining the Electric Fund this next year, just running as-is?
Yes, sir. That's the direction we were given, that we would take off, that there would be a sale, so we're doing the 6% and doing the transfers as we normally would.
As far as the capital goes, though, you know, we are maintaining the direction we were given, that we do the minimum required capital improvements to stay within the requirements of the purchase and sale agreement. So that's actually been substantially reduced from where it stood at the five-year CIP last year. I think our original five-year CIP from last year showed a transfer of almost $6 million, and we're down to 3.4. Tom and Randall both have had a good, hard look at what's in that capital program to reduce it to the minimum. And I think we talked about that a little bit at the last budget workshops. For instance, like the roof, you know, we had a roof replacement in there. Well, that doesn't make any sense to do, so they've dialed that back to the minimum amount of repair to the roof they can do to keep the rain from dripping in. So we have made some adjustments to that.
Mr. Winger?
And we're required, I'm sorry, this is still on her comment, and we are required by our contracts to keep a minimum level of maintenance.
That is correct. We need, we have to industry standards, and most of our capital drawbacks really were relating to the power plant itself. And I'm not sure, even if the contract fails, that's some, that's an asset we really want to maintain for any long length of time.
Also required by the purchase and sale agreement, each time we make these adjustments to our adopted five-year capital improvement program, to send them forward to FP and L and make sure that they're in concurrence with us, that we're meeting the spirit of that agreement in terms of maintaining it to industry standards.
I guess my question is the service levels. I mean, I've had some people, you know, kind of ask me questions about the warehouse issue, that maybe we're not staffing it as much as we should, that perhaps we might run into delivery issues, and we might run into issues that there won't be anybody there when emergencies are called upon.
You have staffing issues at the warehouse, and we are adjusting when departments can take materials in and out, which is becoming a challenge, but that's the downsizing of the organization in general. It should not affect responses to outages and those type of things.
Okay, but you're, so my understanding is that your policy then is that the service levels are not going to be degraded by whatever changes that we do.
Sir, we should be able to respond. Only the internal service levels will be affected.
We may, in other words, we, you know, what we're working towards is we may have to affect the hours, for instance, for normal, coming to the warehouse, taking things out in operations, but certainly, emergency responses are a different thing entirely, and we will do our best to maintain that level of service. I'll say that along with kind of the thing everyone else has said, it will be a challenge, given the reduction in staffing, but we're going to try to make our way through it.
Let's put a bookmark where we are. We're going to take a break for lunch, be back here.
Mr. Mayor, just one more page through Electric.
Okay.
They've been here all morning.
The only comment I have on the Electrical is this, and it's an observation more than anything. If you go to page 83 and you look at the cash carryover, the negative 870, that's actually a good number.
That's correct.
And so, in effect, this, this enterprise is doing 870 better, in a sense, because it's spending 870, or has 870 as a number, correct or incorrect?
That is correct. You're building up your...
Then I would submit to you, just for the public more than anything, we're putting $1,055,000 into the attorney. That brings it almost to $2 million that, you know, if we weren't involved in the situation we were, this thing would be doing better than it is. And in addition to that, it's throwing off $3,400,000 worth of cash that we're going to put back in. We're not going to borrow, we're going to actually put back into the enterprise. In other words, it's throwing off a cash balance, which will then be reinvested in the enterprise. And my reason for saying this, this is actually Mr. Gory's point, is this enterprise is throwing off 5 million, 5.3 million dollars for what it's worth. I mean, it's not like it's a failing enterprise. We all have to have a resolution to this sooner rather than later, but I think it is interesting. It's being run successfully.
Well, while I agree with you, it's not a separate business out there throwing off $5 million profits. That $5 million profits is coming out of the pockets of the residents and the ratepayers, so...
I agree.
Whereas you're saying it's just being thrown out, it is being taken out of pockets of everyone to be thrown off.
I agree. We're in an intolerable situation where we're spending this money for the lawyer, and our rates are higher by the amount they are, $2 million a month, and that has to be resolved as soon as possible. I couldn't agree with you more, Mrs. Carroll.
Okay, let's take a break. 1:00 here and start up again.